We call the rule to establish form, please.
Ms. Fodor, here.
Ms. Jernerbro, here.
Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Cope.
Present.
Ms. Palastrellini, absent.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Please rise if you're able.
Say the pledge of allegiance.
This is a foundation on the earth.
All right, thank you, everyone. Do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
You. The first one is Bonnie Engle.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, village trustee, hardworking staff. I am Bonnie Engel. I'm president of the Hampshire Township Hysterical Society. Hampshire Township Historical Society. And with me is our vice president, Mr. Bill Swalwell, who is a well man indeed, and our lifelong historian board member, Horace Ruth.
Old Hampshire.
Famous Horace Ruth. And I just have a few notes here that I just would like to have your kind of...
Long-winded.
Well, it'll take me a few years to step up. But what we would like to do as the Hysterical Historical Society is be the first to wish you a happy 150th year anniversary. It's going to have a fabulous year in 2025, celebrating their 150th year. And we are so grateful to all of you who continue to lead this town and dedicate your time and talent. And we are so grateful for the ancestors that moved from Henpeck to Hampshire. I mean, who the heck wants to be from Henpeck? We would much rather be purple and white whippers from Hampshire. I mean, what's better than that? So in any case, we are also working very hard with and a part of the 150th Anniversary Planning Committee. And maybe you've heard, we're going to have a fabulous year and lots of special events next year. The Historical Committee is going to continue to have their stock hop in June. And at the same time, we're developing with the 150th Committee, three days of Weekend of Old Fashioned Days. Now, few of you may remember that from before, but it was before the Coon Creek Days we had Old Fashioned Days. And we're going to have a variety of events for children, families, and adults over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There's also talk of a possible headquarters. Because 50 years ago, and a few of us were around then, there was the little headquarters where people had materials and could come and talk and learn about what was cooking in the town for the year. That's just in the talking stage. But if we have little headquarters, we could have displays, we could have small events, and we could have little gatherings celebrating our town. By the way, we're still doing monthly programs as the Historical Society. And today, we interviewed our 30th senior. So we've been busy interviewing the older generation of this town. Some sadly have gone to heaven since we did interview them. But those that are still warm and above the grass, we're sitting down with them and getting their stories. We are also exploring more programs for children and families. And we're also exploring charitable giving. You don't say donation. You don't say fundraising. Just charitable giving for the Hampshire History Museum. That's on the scope. So on behalf of our 80 members plus, we wish you a wonderful, happy 150th year. Thank you. And now Bill Swalwell is going to give some remarks as well. I did get you.
You're pretty quick.
Oh, I put out my glasses.
Those are cute. With the planning of the 150th sesquicentennial, took me a while to get that down. The committee, one of the first events that we're going to do is the exhumation of the time capsule. And we wanted to do it in timing as close to Hampshire's anniversary and incorporation date as possible, which is November 9th, right?
The 9th.
The 9th.
Sunday.
Monday, we are scheduled to dig up the time capsule. It's a series of volunteers in the community, Bruce Berklow III. They're going to be running the backhoe. We've got Cy Herman involved to help with coordinating and pressure washing the vault after it's out. We're going to open it on site, thanks in large part to Clerk Stuhler's suggestion. Take the contents out of the time capsule, load them into a couple of tubs, and move them somewhere safe so we can go through them and inventory everything that's in at a later date. I'm a big one on visuals and pictures, if I can pass these around. The first set of photos I'm passing are 50 years old. They're from the original burial of the original time capsule in 1976, Hampshire Centennial. The second booklet that I have is 25 years old, and it shows the new vault in 2001. This is the vault we will be digging up on Monday. It's open to the public. It starts at 8:00 a.m. How long it's going to take to dig, I have no idea. But we hope within a day's time to dig it up, open it, remove its contents, and relocate its contents. My understanding is the vault typically doesn't withstand being opened without breaking. Therefore, we're going to probably have to replace it, but that's fine. That's exactly what we did last time. So it's open to public. If anyone's available and love to attend, please do. There'll be quite a crowd, and last time, as you can see in those photos, it was quite a big public turnout. So you're welcome to come. And again, this is kind of one of the kickoff events, I would say, for the 150th, the first event of many that are coming over the next year, between Park District and Library and Historical Society and everything else. So thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening. And if you have any questions, feel free to look at the pictures as they come around. So thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you very much.
I don't have to take him back.
Oh, well, another party.
We just have some make-up.
Thank you, thank you. Get another party, you're a piece of...
Okay. It's in front of the saddle, but you should have a break by the bell. Anyone else signed up this evening?
Mr. Swalwell has signed up, and that's it.
Okay. Next, we have a swearing-in this evening. Before you is Mr. Stephen Corus. Please join me in welcoming Stephen Corus to the Hampshire Police Department. Officer Corus joins us from working in the private sector as a recruiter for construction in the industrial field. He has also been involved in local communities while coaching youth and high school athletic programs. Mr. Corus is excited to join the Hampshire Police Department and continue to make an impact. He was accompanied by his wife Laura and parents, David and Margie, for a swearing-in. Looks like there might be more of you. Please, family, if you want to take pictures, you can move around or however you guys want to do it.
Aye.
Aye. Stephen Corus.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Hampshire.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Hampshire.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of sworn police officer?
Of the office of sworn police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Now, we're going to take a few pictures over here. Yeah, let's make it official.
Just keep it out of the way.
So dang, no. You got a daughter, you got a wife.
Like, you're good.
Gee, try going next to Mike. But actually, Mike should be on the outside.
There are all the proceeds agreed, too.
Family, I'm going to take a picture.
Here, Ma, you want me to take yours?
Just nothing. Thank you.
Do you have any order that you want?
Well, Steve should stand next to his wife.
Okay.
So he doesn't get in trouble when he goes home.
I know. I'm just winging it in.
If anybody's curious, now would be the time to call your friends and tell them to speed because they're all here. Thank you all.
All right, so...
I know, sir. Thank you. I'm well.
No, that's okay. Now, you can say it. And everyone else.
All the others.
Yeah, I think all the others.
All the others.
The one, Mr. T.
New team member. Girl, where do you want to stand?
I'll just, I'll just trot in.
Okay.
Girl, I don't know if you're in, sorry, ma.
I gotta take names. Hey, girl, are you sure you're on the right side? I want to say it for my troll again.
Send her two guests. This is how especially everyone's like, we get to meet you.
Don't feel that you guys need to stay. Let's celebrate. Good for being here.
Good to meet you all.
To the village. So we, uh, Chief, is this, is this your ceremony lot?
Thank you.
This is the only one we have. Don't be afraid. Be the one.
All right, everyone. For you, you have the leading minutes for October 16th, 2025. Take a minute to review them.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions or comments about the minutes? Hearing done, I'll entertain, uh, Ms. Burkett, so we'll boost.
Ms. Jernerbro, aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Corus.
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini, aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor, aye.
Next, we have a couple of reappointments. As you know, Jeanie Mayor and Michelle Mankowski have served on the Downtown Beautification Committee for some time. Their terms are up at the current moment. And they have both submitted applications to continue serving the Beautification Committee alongside Bill Swalwell and the work that BDC is doing. Their information is in the packet. Again, it was just a letter of intent, if you will, letter of willingness to serve. Does anyone have any questions about either appointment?
Make the motion to reappoint Jeanie Mayor to the Beautification Committee.
So moved. Second. Whatever. Do you have a first or a second? Are there any questions?
Thank you for serving. That's all.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, next is for Ms. Mankowski.
Make a motion to reappoint Michelle Mankowski to the Beautification Committee.
Second.
Again, thank you for serving.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Good evening, Mrs. Seehausen.
Good evening. Um, we have...
You're still here. Just thought I'd call that out.
Um, thanks.
I have to throw her every single night. I have to throw her. She acts like she's got it all together, and then I have to throw a wrench at her right at the beginning.
So we have a resolution approving a final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge North Neighborhood, G1.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to bracket items 8A through E because there's one agenda supplement for five class of subdivisions. As you are aware, Prairie Ridge North was, had a preliminary plat of subdivision approved back in 2023. As they're ready to develop each of the neighborhoods, they come in for a final class subdivision. They are breaking up G and I into two phases, so there's G1, G2, and I2. That's why there's five class subdivisions, but three neighborhoods. On page one of the agenda supplement, it compares the preliminary plat to the final plat. There are no changes in the number of units, the number of buildings for the neighborhoods. Just to know for neighborhood G and Mr. Engel, who's here from town, can correct me if I'm wrong, but the town home units are going to be the five units or six unit buildings. If that makes sense. So that is, it wants a planning zoning commission on October 13th, and they recommended approval for zero. There are no findings of facts for past subdivisions, and there was no public comments provided prior to or during the public meeting at the planning zoning commission level. If you have any questions, I can answer them, or Mr. Engel from town can answer them as well.
Are there any questions from the board?
Just one. Is there a reason to separate G and I into two different projects?
It's just market-driven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just easier to, you know, separate that and have X amount of lots.
It allows you to sell that amount at once without having to sell the whole neighborhood.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, they are individual resolutions, so I'm going to have to call, roll call vote for each one. So I'll entertain a motion approving resolution approving the final class subdivision for Prairie Ridge North, G1.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini, aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor, aye.
Ms. Jernerbro, aye.
Motion passes as soon.
Now, I'll entertain a motion approving a resolution for a final class subdivision for Neighborhood G2.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call vote, please?
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini, aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor, aye.
Ms. Jernerbro, aye.
And Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passes as soon.
Now, I will entertain a motion approving a resolution approving a final class subdivision for Neighborhood H.
So moved.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call vote, please?
Ms. Palastrellini, aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor, aye.
Ms. Jernerbro, aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Motion passes as soon.
Next, I'll entertain a motion approving a final class subdivision for Prairie Ridge Neighborhood I1.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call vote, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor, aye.
Ms. Jernerbro, aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini, aye.
Motion passes as soon.
Not to be confused with the votes, but now we're going to move on to I2 Neighborhood. Entertain that motion approving a resolution for a final class subdivision for Prairie Ridge North, I2.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call vote, please?
Ms. Fodor, aye.
Ms. Jernerbro, aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Ms. Palastrellini, aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passes as soon.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Resolution setting the public hearing date for corporate tax levy for December 4th, 2025. Ms. Lyons.
So in your four agenda packet, I have a agenda supplement, and I have just a very quick presentation for this purpose, so I'm going to share it on screen.
So as you see in our packet here, we have the regular agenda supplement. This is just setting the hearing date. Does anyone have any questions for the agenda supplement or for Ms. Lyons about the agenda supplement? Off she painted. Now, if you're wondering, thank you.
Okay. So tonight, we will be studying the property tax levy for collection in 2026, as well as setting the public hearing date. So I just have a quick presentation regarding this. The green, line green of from 12 o'clock to approximately 2:30 is representative of the property tax revenues received by the village. This is a large percentage of our property, or of our revenue for the general fund. So therefore, this is a very important step to take with respect to making sure that we're able to provide village services for our residents and businesses. I'll remind you that the 2025 Act year levy, it will be set for a maximum amount that the board requests for property taxes. We will request this in 2025, and the property taxes will be received in 2026. We will use this revenue for our 2027 budget. The counties, meaning Kane and McHenry, have provided us with estimated EAV data, and therefore, we will calculate based on that. The village estimates the levy to include the CPI index as well as all new construction. The final levy amount and the related tax rate is determination, is determined by coordination between the two counties because we fall under PTO, which means that we must not increase our tax netty more than the CPI index or 5%, whichever is lower, plus the value of new construction. Our 2025 left calculation includes the CPI index of 2.9%, a multiplier of 1, and EAV between the two counties, Kane County at $433,577,171, and McHenry County at $16,871. Our prior year extension was $1,552,222. And new construction this year was last estimated around September 14th at $25,515,175. And I do have a plus after that. I contacted our Hampshire Township assessor because all of our new construction this year was in, within Hampshire Township. And there were 18 homes that have, at least 18 homes that have closed in the month of October. So that has been added to the new construction values. If we were just to do a two-factor calculation, we would take last year's extension and multiply it by 2.9%, which would add $44,956 to our levy. But as you know, with having new construction over 200 homes in a calendar year, we're providing services for a whole bunch more families, and therefore, it's important to capture the new construction amount as well. I expect the additional revenue for new construction to be over $100,000. The levy request this year is a 15% increase over last year's levy extension. This is the same request that we made a year ago. We're asking for $1,782,900, and I actually believe will be closer to $1,700,000. This is a slight adjustment for my agenda supplement after kind of tweaking the numbers of it. And then our favorite graphic of the year. For every $1, if you ask where do your tax dollars go, the Village of Hampshire will collect approximately 5.7% of those dollars. And then in your agenda supplement, we do have levy kind of calendar, if you will. We have posted the request amount on the village's website. There is a Scrivener's error in there in that I still have my 2024 date. So that was posted on 30 days in advance of the actual public hearing and the proposed date to adopt the levy ordinance. Are there any questions?
One, the EAV that you have up to the 24 million.
Yes.
How many new homes does that include, roughly?
So it includes not only residential, but also commercial and industrial.
EAV is not the average sell price. It's the...
Correct. So absolutely not. So EAV is actually one-third of the approximate market value.
Okay. And I think that's important because if, if you do the quick math, even at a $200,000 home, 200 homes is 40 million.
Yes.
So knowing there's commercial in there, and it does not include our public works facility, correct?
Correct. That will not be...
That's not a tax...
That will not be a taxable piece of property as well. Yes. And then you have to keep in mind also that a home that was closed on in January versus a home that is closed on in October, there's a proration of those taxes as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution setting up hearing date for the corporate tax levy for December 4, 2020. So moved. Again, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, thank you very much.
We have an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Huntley Fire Protection District for after-hour services.
As the board may recall, we, the village approved a similar agreement with the Hampshire Fire Protection District for after-hour services. Maybe two meetings ago, three meetings ago, for after-hour services. So in case there's an emergency, a car drives through a house, went on, it's not during normal business hours. Hampshire Fire Protection District has the authority to build anything unsafe. There is a portion of Hampshire that's covered by the Huntley Fire Protection District up in Lakewood Crossing. So in terms of the content of the IGA, same content, just changed out the wording with Huntley. Chief Wagner from Huntley Fire Protection District is here tonight. If you have any questions for him or myself, but this is essentially the same agreement that you guys passed for the Hampshire... that you guys passed for the Hampshire Fire Protection District, IGA.
Just one point to make sure, since you said the only change is you changed out Huntley. I know there are times when Huntley or Pingery will cover station because our, uh, our local fire protection will be called, out on call. This allows them anywhere in the village to be able to provide after-hours, correct? Not just the homes within the Huntley Fire Protection.
Correct, it would.
Okay.
But their primary responsibility is to Lakewood.
Understood, but if they're covering, let's say, station two, anywhere that is within Hampshire, they can be. This gives them that.
And if you, and if you remember the discussion that we had was, were we handcuffing other agencies, right? Like if Berlin to, I mean, in, 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 uh, cover, right? Uh, Hampshire Fire Protection District felt more comfortable as if they, to remain the ones, that they would be the ones making the call because they have some responsibility here to the village, and it's the same conversation with Huntley, so.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it, that they're not on a cover and we're limiting them to only the part that's within their fire protection district, so.
Understood.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion approving the IGA with Huntley Fire Protection District for after-hours service. So moved.
No, no, it's good.
Questions or comments? It's an intergovernmental agreement, so I'll ask, call the board, please.
Ms. Jernerbro.
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Spouse Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
And Ms. Futter.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Now Felix, hold on just one second, board indulge us. Uh, I'd like to sign this because they need to get it back to Huntley ASAP. And it's already been notarized and everything, so we're going to give it to Chief Wagner. He's enjoying the meeting, he'll stick around. Gotta be respectful of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have an ordinance approving a variance for one forty-seven Mill Avenue to permit a gravel loading zone.
We do have members, representatives on township here that would be available for questions. You're up, Mo.
Thank you, so the Hampshire Township purchased the property, um, at one forty-seven Mill Avenue. They planned to demolish a portion of the existing building in the bottom of paint, front of the image on the PDC agenda supplement, and put up a salt shed. Um, as part of that, they want to put a gravel loading zone, a gravel loading area from the salt shed. Um, they stayed because asphalt got destroyed as a user trucks to load and unload from salt shed. Um, this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October thirteenth, um, and the public hearing was held. It was recommended approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of three to one. Um, and they adopted the petitioner's findings of facts as attached to the agenda supplement. I do want to let the board know that those, um, staff recommended denial or recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend denial. Um, the biggest reason was you can use a gravel, uh, a salt shed with an asphalt parking lot or a concrete, uh, paved surface or gravel area. So we didn't find the findings, facts were met by the petitioner, um, because you could have a paved surface if still utilize a salt shed and.
Did you guys contact any other villages? Because I've built several salt domes. You got five years on the asphalt, it's junk after that. And the concrete, seven years or so, the concrete's wrecked, the salt literally eats it.
Staff did not contact other villages. Uh, so that was staff's recommendation to Planning and Zoning Commission. The petitioner is here to, uh, answer any questions you may have or provide any additional input, or if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them.
Trusty Coats, what's, what's our salt dome, is that gravel in front of it?
I don't know because they were building it last time I was there.
No, 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 the
It's gravel.
Oh, in front of us? No, it's gravel.
It's gravel.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
There's no material made that you can put in front of a salt dome that's going to last because of the salt. Nothing. And you can go and spend a couple hundred grand and pour concrete, you can pour it three feet thick. That much of the top's going to get wrecked from the kind, from the salt. Uh, gravel's the only option to, to do.
Can I ask then, is, with the new public works building where we're going to be putting the salt dome, is that said to be gravel?
I believe it's going to be concrete.
Maybe something better.
It's already concrete, I believe. Okay.
There might be a, a, a new surface on top of the concrete that they can put in, like an epoxy, but, um, see how it holds up. But I'm, I'm in Trusty Coats' camp, I mean, the, where we're at, our current salt dome is all gravel. Does anyone have any questions for staff or the petitioner?
The rest, just one question though, with the residences, because there are some residences on that block. Um, if the gravel then buys any additional stuff and stuff for the
No, it's only one resident.
It's only one.
And, and if you look at the, the picture on page three
Yeah.
Um, of the supplement, that's all gravel there now at the current time. So it's really, I don't really see that it's going to be that much more, if that makes sense.
So is it because that a, a new owner coming in and that anything that had been grandfathered prior has to be looked at? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What, for the township, where's your current salt dome at?
Uh, we're at Peterson's, uh, old fertilizer building.
Wait, okay, and that's gravel in front of it?
That's gravel, really.
I didn't think it was on the new paved lot near your township building.
Hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain an ordinance approving especially use for a variance for one forty-seven Mill Avenue. So moved. Thank you. Questions, comments?
Just to make sure, because I know there's two different recommended motions. The motion that is out is to approve the special use, or the variance, sorry.
That's, you're correct, yeah, but you've lost me, what's the other?
In the, in the supplement, there was recommended motion number one, denial, recommended motion number two, approval, and making sure that
So that's was public planning, zoning commission agenda supplement.
Oh, that was the planning and zoning.
No, I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, the only thing that we're going to vote on would be
Sorry, it's all the same memo that
Understood, I'm sorry, I was just confused.
All right.
So this would be for approving the variance to allow the gravel lot.
Okay, thank you.
We do it first and a second. Ms. Clerk, can you call the board, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cope.
Aye.
Ms. Spouse Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Futter.
Aye.
Ms. Jernerbro.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
And you say thank you to the board, and thank you to Trusty Coats for your expertise in sharing that with the rest of the board. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you for coming tonight, guys, and thanks for what you do.
Amen.
Dan, get some sleep tonight. All right. Yeah.
Seven five dozen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done.
Ordinance approving a special use permit for forty-five W three fifty-three, U.S. Route twenty-two, permit a truck maintenance facility.
So, um, I do want to let the, the board know that the petitioner is not, is not attending right now. So if you have any questions, unfortunately, they're not here. So I, I don't know how you want to proceed.
Did we know ahead of time that they were not going to be able to do it tonight?
No, I, I had conversation and email correspondence today. So my assumption was they were coming today, and they were notified that the meeting was today. So I can proceed with
I don't, uh, I, I am not comfortable with a lot of this. So, I mean, there's two approaches to this, right? The board, we can discuss it, and we can, we can vote on it as it is without, we having the opportunity to ask the questions, and they take the risk that this gets denied, for lack of better terminology, based on fact that they didn't find it in their schedule to come talk to us tonight. Or, um, or we table this to give them an opportunity and kick this down the road some more. What do you guys want to do?
I certainly don't feel comfortable giving it to them if they, they couldn't have somebody show up, somebody's wife. Well, that's why I'm wondering, like, they were notified, it was on the agenda, we were talking about it, it went through planning.
Yes, they sent me, uh, on the dice, was, is a PowerPoint presentation that they were going to go through tonight. They sent today, and I confirmed with them, I printed it out and placed it on the dice, the board numbers.
And during the meeting, there's been no reach out or contact to any staff saying, hey, we can't make it, something came up, nothing.
Uh, unless it was between six thirty and seven, while I was sitting up here, um, but prior to that, there was no.
Okay.
So it's a no-show.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So my, my question is, is so, just help me with this, and good evening, Mr. Stack. What happens if the board decides to vote this down? Do they have to start the whole process over again?
Uh, yes, they would.
Thanks. What do you guys want to do?
How many, this is the first attempt at getting them here.
This is the first attempt to get them here?
This is the first time, this is coming from the board, yes.
Did they show up to planning and zoning?
Yes, they did.
We might want to give them one more shot.
And, yeah, and I'll make sure to have more communication with them and confirm like, hey, this is going to come on. If the board does table it November twentieth, please confirm your attendance, you know, make sure you're here to answer the question for the board may have. So I'll make sure to have more communication with them.
Yeah, I, I will say this, this is a piece of property that's very near and dear to all of our hearts. And I have a really big problem with them not showing up. And so if it is the will of this board to cut them some slack, fine, but I'm, I'm, they, it was oppressed upon them that this was a hot-button topic. We've gotten beaten up on this property more times than, you know, it was like two hundred thirty-eight days that we got beat up on this property, and we still continue to get beat up on this property.
What time did that begin?
One forty-three in the morning.
Morning.
In the morning. So, I mean, if the board wants to be nice to the petitioner, that's fine, but I'm, I, I will go on record and say that I am not very happy about this, and I'd be a hundred percent okay voting this down to have them start all over again, because that's not the way that this should be treated. I'm sorry.
Is, is this the same developer? Mm-hmm. I know it's the same property, just making sure that it's all the same players on the team.
Yep, it's the same property, it's the same, it's, it's the prop, the petitioner on behalf of the same group that did all of the same stuff that we all had to go through over and over and over.
I guess my opinion is I, I agree with Trusty Coats and Trusty Robinson. As painful as the previous process was, I would hate for us to not give at least one opportunity and treat them as we would others. Not saying we would automatically give somebody else an opportunity, and it's also not to say that if we were to talk about it right now, it would be denied. Who knows where it'll end up? Uh, I, I feel like there wouldn't be no other chances outside of that, of it stopping the discussion and the, and the vote. It's not, again, I just want to reiterate, like, not being here doesn't mean that your motion gets denied. It just means you don't have a chance to answer our questions.
Mm-hmm. I would think we would have a lot of questions. Um, I, I will say too that I reached out to one or two people and said, are you aware of this? And they, they were not. So if the people that were that concerned, that filled a gymnasium, were not aware that this is happening, I mean, granted, there's public notices, et cetera, um, but when they come back and said they have no idea that it was being looked at again, I, I paused, really paused on that one. So the fact that they're not here, um, and didn't call and gave us this because of their presentation and then didn't show, um, that puts a real bad taste in my mouth. Um, but I kind of have to defer to, agree with some of my trustees, fellow trustees, that, um, that's how we operate is that we give the benefit of the doubt, and this is a, a new request and should be treated that way, so I would recommend a continuance.
Well, someone can make a motion.
Can we give them a, a timeline? Like, uh, in the next, the next meeting, they better show? Well, that's the motion is
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we table this agenda item till the next board meeting, at which time it should be discussed.
Before that gets seconded, um, do we have a very busy next meeting that this wouldn't fit for us? Because then we could move it
It's not light, but it's not super busy either.
Okay. But the next one, this first week in December, is a little bit easier?
Yeah, but I, I would not be comfortable pushing this into the first or second meeting in December, those are always terrible for us.
Okay. That's why we
So this should be for the
November twentieth.
Okay. Then I'll second that, then, sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, I only have one question, not to modify the motions or anything like that. Our staff, are you comfortable being able to meet the deadlines and stuff for the next meeting, like, if they do come and all?
Yeah, I mean, as, as far as staff's perspective, it's going to be the same agenda supplement, just update the date of the agenda supplement. There's not, there's no changes from the Planning and Zoning Commission because it's already done there, so as far as us meeting deadlines, there's nothing on the report that's
Nothing in the, that the application would change, it's just moving this exact agenda item to the next meeting, correct? Legally, that's what we're doing?
Yes.
Tell them if they don't show, it's a no-go.
Yeah, and I'll make sure to communicate, I have a risk of this now, yeah.
All right. I have a first and a second. Um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is another text amendment.
Ordinance approving text amendments to chapter six, article three of the Hampshire Municipal Code regarding fence regulations.
Thank you. You're a lot of me tonight.
It's the mocho.
Yeah. Um, so our zoning ordinance is really silent on fence regulations. So when someone applies for a fence permit, we provide recommendations on height, setbacks, locations, and things like that. Uh, the only thing that our code right now stipulates is that fences can't go in front of the front wall, and then it has to be twenty feet setback from the corner side of the minus six, if you want. Uh, in terms of height, um, types of fences, uh, when fencing is required between a commercial and or non-residential and residential property, all that is silent in our code right now. So staff thought it was a good idea to implement these regulations for fencing, uh, to make sure there's orderly development of it, and also to provide screening between residential, non-residential property. So say we put a, somebody, a box, a non-res, a residential property, and they're putting up a strip mall, they will be required to buy solid fencing to provide screening between the two properties. Uh, so that is kind of the gist of the regulations. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and recommended approval of, uh, of the text amendments by a vote of three to two. They did make two changes to what staff presented. The first one was allowing a fence height of up to seven feet in residential districts. Though staff recommended in industry standard of maximum height of six feet in residential districts, and then prohibiting snow or self-fencing, except when there's a snow event or construction occurring on property. So you can't put like a, a plastic type as a fence or on your property, unless you do construction, you require that for construction. Uh, so those were the two changes made from staff, what, what was presented by staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mo, if I could get your opinion on the, the, uh, the changing to seven feet from six? Because I think we recommended one, and they're recommending it to go higher, so I'd like to get your opinion.
So six feet is an industry standard, if you look at ninety-nine percent of zoning ordinances, they're Ross, Illinois. Sixteen will be a maximum height, that's what staff recommended with that. Um, there were some commissioners that believed that due to taller heights of individuals, that they could look over a six-foot fence, and then recommended seven feet as the recommendation.
Which is nuts, because fencing comes in six foot or eight foot, so you're going to buy an eight-foot section and cut a foot off.
To, to, to be fair, I can understand why they would want that, though, considering the average height of our Planning and Zoning Commission is about eight and a half. What? Well, I was, I'm in your boat, though, right? It's, it's six or eight feet, that's it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not, like, you don't, you don't go buy a seven-foot fence.
No.
No, like, I get where they're coming from, if you're tall, I, I mean, I, I understand that argument, however, it's six or eight, that's it.
You know, it's not shrubs on the inside.
Yeah, the shrubs can go high.
I love you.
I'm going to ask a question that I already know the answer to, but I'd like it on record. Um, when, this is considering we have the news about the post office and their plans, is this going to apply to the post office if they decide to put up the fence around there? So my understanding, the zoning ordinance does not apply to them.
Of course.
They do whatever they want.
Yeah.
So a twenty-foot fence would be okay?
Well, no, but, or they won't even have to put one up. Because, or they want, like, the, the, so if you think about the Casey's, or you think about the strip mall in seventy-two, either one of them, right?
You think about anything else in this town
It's a metal, sorry, the ordinance. No, post office, well Well, I, I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, is that the, the fencing requirement for the commercial up against residential, so theoretically, had this been in place, there should be a fence on the property line up against the townhomes and that kind of stuff. That's what, that's what that fencing requirement is. And that being said, I don't think the post office could build up a twenty, a twenty-foot fence, I don't think they're going to put up one at all.
Just wanted it on record that everyone else is going to be required to follow the ordinance except for the federal government. Just wanted on record that everyone else is going to be required to follow the ordinance except for the federal government.
Yeah.
Yeah. Follow-up question, if they choose to open up a snow fence.
That's a temporary fence.
So my, my, this is the post office? I hate to give the same answer, but.
So I like to hear the same answer.
The zoning ordinance does not necessarily apply to the post office.
I have a question about snow fence, but if you.
No, go ahead with the snow fence, I have other questions.
This doesn't apply to events, it's a dumb question, right? But Coon Creek uses the heck out of snow fence and so like, and same with the car show, right? When they do it and they use it to separate the beer tent from the different areas, like, how does that all work with this? Are they in violation of the zoning code or is it because of the special use or special event permit that that's allowed?
These are temporary fences though.
But this specifically, there's no events in construction.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
So how does that work?
Well, I'm just reviewing the code, the rest of the code.
I just want to make sure we're not approving this and then all of a sudden the neighbors are calling on Coon Creek.
Well, we can, we could just have any special event added to it.
Well, that's my point, is is that, is that, is that availability in the code?
I think we we would need to add language for specialty bags to make it clear. I don't want to leave ambiguous and just say it's.
And I think it should say as approved for special events, because not every special event should have a temporary fence.
Right, if it's on the large group gathering where we have to, where they have to give us their site plan and layout and stuff and we sign off on it, are we in con- do we conform with our code? That that's the part that I'm concerned about. Even though we know about it, we said it was okay, I don't want to be in violation of our code, that that's what I'm concerned with.
My recommendation will be to add, so under, if you're on page seven of the agenda supplement, under subsection C, where it says prohibited fencing, put like, with the exception of approved special events.
At the end of point five?
Yes.
Yeah. So snow or silk fencing, except during snow or snow event, it should be like snow event comma during construction or approved special event.
Correct.
So we are not going to hear this tonight, we're going to go ahead and take these recommendations and we're going to redo them and redo the ordinance and bring it back to you guys in the next board meeting. So after you guys finish the discussion with the changes, we're going to review, we're going to go ahead and kick that back to staff and then we'll bring it back up for review to read. So make sure we got everything correct and then have you guys hear it again at the next board meeting, okay?
So we'll have to do a motion to table after we have the discussion.
Correct.
But I think we only have two changes and then that's the addition of that language that you just said. And then we haven't had a motion yet to, um, change the six-foot maximum, a seven-foot maximum to six-foot maximum, so those are the only two changes.
Well, I've got other questions.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, on that same page, seven, under general requirements, solid fences shall provide a minimum of three-inch clearance at the bottom of the fence.
Mm-hmm. So for stormwater runoff. So if you have a solid.
In a stormwater area, I could understand, but that's also often just high enough for people's dogs to get underneath the fence into neighbors' yards and maybe they're getting a fence to be able to ensure they.
Or chickens.
So that that's my concern, I understand the purpose of why it's written there and in a stormwater flow area, I can understand, but in general, to say any solid fence has to be at least three inches for somebody that may have a smaller pet that they want to be able to allow outside without a leash because they have a fence, they built for it or whatever other animals, or maybe they don't want animals in their yard, three inches allows a lot of animals to get through.
So that, the reason why it's a general requirement is because of natural drainage, right? But regardless if you're in a stormwater area or not, water is going to drain in one direction or another. So that's why that's the general requirement, because regardless of where you are, it's going to drain one direction or another, so you need to allow that water to drain off in its in its natural way.
I've never seen a fence three inches above the grade.
Trust me, if you got, if you got a fence tied out in the ground and you got that much water coming, it's going to blow that piece of wood right out of the way.
All right. And if it's changing, it's just going to run through them.
I I just, I I'm I'm struggling, okay? I I'm not just a fence guy, I put up my fair share of fences that I've never kept them three inches off the ground. And therefore, also by our ordinance, if you have your six-foot fence panel that's three feet, that's six foot and then you go up sit three inches, then you're six foot three, so what are you doing, cutting the fence? Because we'd be in violation of the ordinance, wouldn't we, wouldn't we if we were six foot three point?
No, they measure the actual product.
No, but no, from the ground, it's six foot three inches.
Six foot.
It would be a six foot three inch fence, we'd be in violation of the ordinance, would we not?
Correct.
So how do you, how 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 do we not understand what I'm missing?
Well, again, the intent was to make sure that there's no water pooling on a property or preventing water from running off. That was the intent of that requirement.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I I I completely get it, but even after you put in the fence, it settles, then it comes down anyway, I don't know, without we're going to be I I don't know how we would enforce it other than during the building process and then you're going to be having people cut. They're going to buy a six-foot fence and they're thinking they're going to have a six-foot fence and they could be six foot three. They're going to come out with a tape measure and have these people cut off the fences again. And we've had that with people with pools where they have, we have the, what's the pool requirement in fences? I think it's forty-eight inches and then they get the forty-eight inch fence and they get the scalloped fence and then it becomes a problem because the center of that scallop is like six inches lower, so it's only forty-two inches and then they have to build the fence back up, that happened up at Lakewood Crossing a bunch of times because they put in a pool and it didn't. I think it needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Okay, and I do think you, point one goes to what you're talking about, that no fence shall be erected, constructed or maintained to impede natural stormwater runoff of any portion of a lot or a chaining, adjoining lot of land. So then if if that's the rule that's to help with stormwater, like you know this is a stormwater path, then the three-inch one shouldn't matter and if if during heavy storms, water does collect, but it's not a natural runoff for that stormwater anyway, that's something the homeowner is taking a risk of having water pool in their backyard. My rec- my recommendation would be to remove, be the three inch.
Two?
I think you should just.
Uh, sorry, number two.
Bring it back.
Agreed.
Yeah, and that's what they're going to do, trustee Koch. They'll clean up the language and bring it back.
The the next question I have, Mr. Khan, is a town home building considered a multifamily building or a single-family residence?
Multifamily.
So then per this, would all of the new constructed town home buildings be required to have fencing around them? Because B, uh, two says a minimum six-foot fence and up to a maximum ten-foot solid fence shall be constructed along lot lines of a lot for multifamily developments that abuts a lot of a single-family residential. And in all of our developments, we have mul- we have townhomes next to single families. So the way I'm reading this is those townhomes would now need to have, because they haven't been built yet.
Right.
They would now have to have a six-foot to ten-foot fence put around.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that fairly common in other communities? Because I don't know that I've seen.
Yes, the multifamily, yes.
Just not, we've never required.
No, we've not, and yeah.
Not ten foot though, really?
Up to ten, it can be up to, it, so that's going to be the expression of the developer to between, what was it?
The way that this reads, excuse me, interrupting, it says solid fence shall be constructed along lot lines of a lot for the multifamily development that abuts a lot in a single-family resident district, so it sounds like every single town home is going to have to have a fence around it, the way that this is written.
I will clean up the language, the intent is around the the development.
Do you really want to fence in that people do just live in a smaller home? I mean, it sounds kind of cagey and.
I don't, I don't, I don't see the need for that, but I I mean, I I don't, I mean, I could be crazy, but like, I I mean, I.
I kind of agree, because we already have a bunch of new development townhomes that wouldn't have the fence and somehow if you're going to buy in a new one, now you have a fence and then I start to wonder how far off the lot line does that even give you a backyard, does it?
Yeah, and then who maintains it and?
Well, the H O A would have to retain it, right, you would think, right?
Does it affect your, you know, affordability? Plus, I think though, we, the subdivisions that we've just approved, um, it's an open concept too that kind of is supposed to blend and look like it's open space. Um, and to put up those fences, I I disagree. I mean, we fought pretty hard to get the lot size.
Yeah.
And they're going to be that much smaller if we put them up a wall.
Yeah.
Um, and this, the next.
The consensus is to remove the multifamily fencing requirement?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure I get all this.
Following on that, because point three speaks to multifamily residents with non-residential, so you have your commercial and multifamily, it's talking about you have to have a minimum six, ten-foot fence around all trash and garbage receptacles, but usually townhomes will have their own out front, don't they? Or do they have a common trash can that they use, like a dumpster?
So from most townhomes have the individual receptacle.
Right.
Um. I can clean up the language to for, you know, common trash, garbage receptacles, add that word common in there, so they clarify it and differentiate it from individual.
Uh, yeah, however it needs to be cleaned up, I get where you're going at, like, if there's an apartment complex and you have dumpsters, that's what I think this is talking about.
Correct.
But if we define townhomes as a multi-unit or multifamily unit who have their own individual trash service, then this makes it to where they all have to have that six-foot fence.
Again, yeah, I can clean up the language on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Hey, one. I have one final question. Prohibited fences and gates, barbed wire and chicken wire, unless you're going to enclose a garden with your, uh, side yard, enclose a side yard or rear yard garden. Pick, I don't even know what pick wire is, but no electrical fence, but my 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 point is, I guess, barbed, barbed wire, um, we're going to allow barbed wire if they're trying to keep people out of their garden?
No, you put chicken wire up around a garden to keep rabbits out.
I understand the chicken wire. No, I understand the chicken.
You're in the wrong paper.
I think the com- the comma separates barbed wire from the chicken.
Yes.
Okay, so it's like barbed wire, chicken wire, except for around a garden.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
Then, yeah.
But it doesn't reference the chicken coop at all? And maybe we should, correct, um, the chicken wire on the chicken coops should be allowed, it's a thought.
Really protecting your vegetables.
Do you see the rabbits lately?
Now, um, we, I haven't, I haven't seen razor wire on here at all.
Well, you just wait until.
So was that a permitted thing because we just call out razor wire or is that?
Is that different than barbed?
Yes, very different.
Yes, it has those.
And especially in commercial, when you have storage facilities, they'll do a regular fence and razor wire around the top for.
Is that like the loops?
Correct.
Okay.
Could we add something that says or similar defensive, something, or whatever legal?
Razor wire is worse.
Yeah.
So now instead of the two changes, you have several votes. You'll clean that up and bring it back to us, will you?
Yes, I'll bring it back on the November twenty fifth.
Yeah, we have to make a motion to table this.
Did we, did we discuss the difference between six and seven feet?
Oh, six, seven, how could I forget?
The songs are going to make the changes.
Anybody watching at home is going to think that we're trendy because it mentions six, seven.
Forty nine.
Six, seven.
Yeah, I think, I think six should be enough, my personal opinion, because I don't know where you're going to get.
Yes. Yeah, also no one's going to spend more for this.
See, are this.
So if I could just kind of go over the changes, make sure I got some, is that okay?
It would be lovely.
Okay, so we have add for subsection C, except, add the except for specialty run for the snow fencing. Six-foot maximum for residential district. Remove the three-inch clearance requirement. Remove multifamily fencing requirement.
Up against residential only. Like B two.
Yeah. Okay.
We're not, that doesn't, we're not advocating them up against a commercial property.
Right, multifamily against single family.
Correct.
Single family district. Uh, multifamily trash receptacles, clarify that, for common dumpsters, common receptacles. Clarify about the chicken wire for chicken coops. And then razor wire, other defensive materials. Add language about that.
I have one more question about the electric.
We're going to delete razor wire, right? We're going to add it.
We can add it.
Going to add so it's prohibited.
It is not specifically called out.
You have to take yours down, trustee.
Yeah.
Electrically charged wire fences, that does not apply to underground like pet fences, right? Because those are electrically charged, they're just not meant to give off.
I will clarify that, so it's, again, I'd rather not have an ambiguous code, I'd rather have it clear code too.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
We seem to believe that there's somewhere else in our code that calls out the invisible fence. I think it's under the leash laws for the dog, so you might, you might, you might check that to make sure it coincides. Because I believe that that it was adopted at a later time, the invisible electric fence for dogs. I don't care where you put it in the code, just make sure that it doesn't conflict with itself.
Got it.
Mr. Khan, I do have one question.
Yes, definitely.
Funny for bringing it up.
On page six, the fences section number nine was struck out and this one speaks specifically to, and I assume it was struck out because the new fences ordinance takes us, but this part speaks specifically to corner lots where, um, basically it's speaking to obstructions where a fence can create an obstruction.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't see anything in the fence ordinance that sets, like, when you look at setbacks on E, which is page eight of the supplement, I don't see anything that speaks to the obstructions or obstruction of view, is that just taken out and we're not, do we feel like if this is all followed, then there wouldn't be obstructive views?
So if you go to page seven of the agenda supplement.
Okay.
Under subsection A, um, three, no fence shall obstruct the view of any vehicular pedestrian traffic.
But how do we define obstructive view, obstructive view of what?
Like the measurements, are you talking like?
No, because if you say no fence shall obstruct the view of any vehicular or pedestrian traffic. So is that saying that if somebody's walking down the street, I have to be able to see them? But at what point do I have to be able to say I can safely see them?
That's a good point.
So that's, I don't want to nitpick, but I also don't want two neighbors that hate each other to come in and say that person's fence now, if my, if, you know, if, if I'm walking down the street, somebody's not going to see me and we're going to be like, okay, neighbor, you're fifty feet away from the corner, I think we're okay.
Right, so there's something called the vision triangle and they're usually, it's measured the corner lot or the corner, well, measure from the corner of the lot that's adjacent to the streets and it's either a twenty-foot measurement or a thirty-foot measurement and that's usually considered what's, if anything's in there is a is within that triangle, it's considered obstructing, so we can add that language.
Whatever staff feels is the appropriate thing to put in there, I just think if we're going to go through and and define things down to the inch and down to the foot of what a fence should be or not be, saying that it can obstruct a view and I'm glad that's in there, we should be able to say this is how we're defining an obstructive view.
I agree. Yep, I can add about the vision triangle. And I'll look at different codes and see if twenty feet or thirty feet is more common and call for that.
Okay. A follow-up question to that, unrelated defenses, sometimes that obstruction could be landscaping, does our code or any of our ordinances address that? And if not, may I suggest that we examine it?
Yeah, I have to look at the code, I. There are some, there are some things in the code specifically called out for obstructions of signage. But I don't necessarily, and and I know that there's some for, and we haven't forced with some of those shrubs, it's up near the, near the pathways. So it's in there somewhere, there's some of it, but to your point, I think it needs to probably be cleaned up.
Especially if we're saying fences can obstruct mean landscaping.
And scarecrows as well.
Yeah, okay, I'll look at landscaping.
I would love to have you invest in that.
We've had to enforce that a couple of times with people.
Scarecrows?
No, which is, no, scarecrows, I guess, are exempt from obstructing use. Okay, so I need a motion to table this so staff can clean this out.
I'll make your motion, second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
I really like to beat things.
Thank you for the in-depth and lively discussion about fences and thank you for bringing in your code book, trustee Robinson.
I think the fire department is going to be attending all these.
He's over there going, this, I'm so thankful.
As long as the fences aren't on fire.
Do you attend very, very many village of hunting meetings?
Occasional.
Should I wear my cowboy hat? You know, that would probably be cooler if I did, right?
Yeah. Even would appreciate.
Yeah, you could tell him I said that. Yeah, you could tell him I said that. Next, we have stamp reports. We have the building report and the engineering report. Tim Paulson hasn't said very much this evening, but he's waiting to say a ton, I'm sure. Uh, you got any thoughts about fences, chicken coops, barbed wire, razor wire, anything like that, Tim?
Uh, not at this time. I'm good. I I will point out in my report that. Did hear from the contractor and I dot regarding safe routes to school and it is their intent to do that construction of April, in April of next year. To start that.
Thought it was November.
That's, it was.
That was a possibility, but they have elected to do it in November.
Fantastic. Thanks for the positive news. Any other questions for Tim or staff about the building report?
I have one for Mr. Khan, um, for the, for the first time, I think in a while, at least that I've noticed. It looks like new home construction and townhome construction only accounts for a very small portion. Of the total permits issued. Where are we seeing permits issued for? Like what's the main reasons for? Where, what are the things going on in the village that's?
Roofing is the big one, roofing or new roofs is a big one right now. We just had a permit for Tuscan wards, I believe. Uh, they're redoing the roof on majority of the Tuscan wards, townhomes. So that accounts for it. And then there's just a lot of, right now at this time, what I saw was AC or like HVAC units. On this time, so those have been quite a few of those, um, and then.
I was just curious, because usually the the new home construction accounts for about half or a little over. This time it was very different, so.
It's a board wishes, I can on the report that details every license, what permit was issued, number of permits issued for every type. If you guys want that attached to this report, that can be done. How many fences, how many HVACs, how many roofs, how many whatever.
Maybe for an end of year type thing, just for curiosity's sake, so not for every report, but. I I have a question for Mr. Paulson, just to, just to keep him in there. How do you feel about burning fences? Just kidding. Um, for Hampshire ninety logistics park, um. We've got the restoration in the basin plantings in twenty twenty five, and my question is. Has that already been done or it is to be done?
Uh, it was to be done, um, they were proposing to do a temporary seeding this fall. I'm not sure the status of whether they've completed, completed that. They weren't going to do the permanent seeding this year. They were going to do temporary seeding to address the erosion issues that are out there.
Okay, so just getting it started and then finishing it up in the spring is the plan?
Uh, yes. It's just to get it covered over the winter so they don't have the continued erosion problems that they, they have encountered out there, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have accounts payable personnel in the amount of one thousand, ten dollars and forty five cents. Oh, there it is. Okay, I'm looking at the one and going, oh, wait a minute, I'm looking to look one, so. What did you find?
Don't worry about it. I'll make a motion to approve these accounts payable to staff.
Put your cards. Roll cover, please, Mr. Clerk.
Aye. Mr. Robinson? Slaughter? Aye. Mr. Jernerbro? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Multi-coat. Motion passes six zero.
Next, the small amount. Any questions?
Same thing.
Why not? I know. This clerk is actively separating trustee Robinson and myself. I'll have the record to show. He's going to put us at the kids table next meeting.
I have a couple of questions, um, for page five. Thank you. It's Hampshire one fifty and I know what that is, um, but Casey's one hundred and fiftieth celebration donation. That, I don't know what that is.
So we've solicited donations on the, on behalf of the hundred and fiftieth commit- committee. We sent out letters as part of that and, um. Some of the checks have come to us and and they shouldn't have. But actually, but actually, this is an interesting story, thanks to Clerk Stuhler's, uh, due diligence. They overpaid for their liquor license. And so, and so, uh, because we're going through that process and it'll come before the, the. The liquor commission shortly with everybody's paperwork and all that stuff, but they overpaid. And so Clerk Stuhler called them up and said, hey, you overpaid. Do you want us to reissue this? Do you want to come to us another check? Or you could donate it to our hundred and fiftieth and they're like, oh, just do that. So that's why that's on. So it was very gracious, it was very gracious. It was very gracious, uh, price for liquor license, just to. You know, if they pay more, they can pay more. Right.
It's a suggested minimal.
So that, so that's why you see.
All right, thank you.
But the majority of the checks that you should not, you should, they should not be coming here. And if you see stuff like that, there's a reason. Moving forward.
Okay, that's fine. Um, page seven, the, uh, the first, uh, item hack company. Um, I just, is that for the wa- water department or I was just trying to figure out because. Each of those are for the wastewater treatment. It is the wastewater treatment. Okay, that's.
Yeah, I was kind of curious about the probe and the job.
We have a very large law bill, legal bill on page eleven. Passarelli law for almost twenty nine thousand dollars.
If you remember, Passarelli law handles a lot of the police labor.
Okay. Is that then multiple months or that happens to be?
It's one month.
It's one month.
We had, we had a grievance arbitration that went to full arbitration hearing. So, and, um, yeah, so that that was full preparation.
Okay, then that's.
Which included, yeah, travel, interviewing witnesses.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable, so. Mr. Can you call it all, please?
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Kelly? Mr. Co? Spoustering? Motion passes six zero.
All right. What do we have next on the agenda? Where's my agenda? Up payable personnel, okay, uh, B D C, how about that?
Uh, so B D C met on the twenty second, it was a different date for us. Um, and had a really good meeting where we talked about updates for the facade applications that happened. I did share with the B D C how the village board, uh, considered facade grant applications, even though they didn't go through the B D C. Just to ensure that they could get processed and things, otherwise they would have waited till November and they all understood and appreciated the, like, the village were doing so. Um, and then we had a. About is there any future pending coming? We, you know, how much budget do we have left? What are we looking at? What does next year look at? So there was a good conversation there. The majority of our time, though, was spent on discussing the process of a comprehensive plan. And really had a working session to kick off what it is that we're hoping to achieve. There was, um, some questions the chairman had sent out asking people to evaluate the village of. You know, what are our strengths? What are some of the areas of opportunity? Um, what are some of the threats from neighboring communities? What are the things that we want to do? Mr. Khan walked us through what a comprehensive plan is and the different areas that you set for prioritization. We talked about ideas around funding for the comprehensive plan. Just so everybody here knows, to do a comprehensive plan, you're talking a little over a hundred thousand dollars based on who you go with. Uh, and so the B D C discussed, you know, could some of the facade program from the next fiscal year? Could there be a proposal to the budget committee to have some of that redirected to help offset costs for the comprehensive plan? Because the comprehensive plan really does help drive business and, uh, does that make more sense? And so, um, it was a really good discussion. We did, of course, didn't get through it all because I think it's, it's going to be a multi-step process. Um, and the chairman asked us all to kind of go back and have some thoughts, uh, bring specific questions. But it was a mainly, the majority of time was spent discussing comprehensive plan and the village of Hampshire and what we're looking to achieve. And we talked about, you know, do we want to focus on things like open space or? How do you, how do you really keep our motto of embrace opportunity, of honor tradition at the center of what we're looking at? When you start to develop a comprehensive plan and how do we ensure Hampshire doesn't lose a little bit of its soul, who it is when you're looking to grow throughout? And be thoughtful on the growth, so, uh. It was, it was a really good discussion around that. Mr. Khan, um, Ms. Sehousen, is there anything that I've missed?
In great detail.
I like to make sure people aren't fun, Mr. President.
You're doing a great job.
Wonderful. That's all I.
New business or other announcements? We do have executives tonight. I have to break the bubbles, I'm sorry.
We do.
Yes, sir.
I have an, an announcement. This Saturday is the holiday on State, I believe.
And a pumpkin smash on Saturday.
Pumpkin smash, so hope to see everybody down on State Street. Celebrate it. Saturday's supposed to be pretty decent before the cold hits on Sunday.
And it's Hampshire's birthday on Sunday, so celebrate accordingly.
Veterans Day on Tuesday and the Veterans Day to all our military families and members.
Trustee Robinson and trustee Kelly are going to try to do the Samuel Rowl look-alike contest on Sunday.
I mean, that's called a Tuesday.
Well, I want, uh, just a plug for our Lions Club. They've got their meat raffle coming up before our next meeting, which is. The meat raffle is the fourteenth at multiple locations, uh, four thirty to eight. So we're going to charitable causes.
And that's fun if you've never been to a meat raffle.
So most of the, my kids, so most of the funds. Most of the funds are going to be pledged or donated to the Irwin family. And those of you who don't know, Dustin is an employee here at the village. And his son is fighting the battle of his life, so. If, uh, you guys have time or can make time, please make an effort to go and participate because their family really needs the help.
Thank you for sharing that.
Any other new business or other announcements? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to go into executive.
You need to specify the meeting for executives.
For the purpose of, um, what is it? What's, which is the one for real estate?
For, for acquisition of real estate.
Yeah, right. Which one is that? Two C, two C one?
I don't know the letter, but you could just stay the.
So what he said, that's why we're going to.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session to discuss acquisition.